Hello. This meeting of the planning board is going to be called to order. You can join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Is there anybody, audio or video recording? It is okay to do so, but you must announce it. All right. Anybody on the board have an announcement to make?
No, sir.
Nope. Anybody in the public have an announcement to make? First up, we have a A and R, Milglin Road. Is there anybody here to speak on that application? Please come up to the table. You'll see a pen and piece of paper there. Please fill in your name, that way we can get the spelling correct. And also introduce yourself.
Chrisanne Stancome.
And Richard Stancome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we have your A and R application. Can you explain it to us, please? What you're hoping to do?
I can do that. If you want to write down. Yes, we bought a piece of property March of last year and with the intent of using much of it for agriculture. There's a ton of apple trees, like 100 apple trees, that we're bringing back. We just started bringing those back. But we also have the intention of dividing it up so that one plot goes to my son and one plot goes to my daughter for building a home.
As they get married.
And the remainder of it would remain with us for agricultural purposes only. So you'll see on there, it's 87 to 93, but the two plots are conforming and what's left over is a non-buildable lot, but it's just for agricultural purposes, just for the farming, just for the trees.
So the 75 feet that you can see on the left-hand side is where all of the apple trees are. We just had an arborist out there helping us try to bring as much back as we could. And then on the right-hand side, we're leaving a path because there's all maple trees there. So we've done our first sugaring on those trees this year. It's been quite adventurous.
It's a lot of work.
How did maple sugar come out?
Very good.
Very good.
I don't even like real maple syrup.
It's a tough year. Then there's not a whole lot of sap, but it came out great. What we've done so far.
A lot of time in for a very little amount, but so far, so good.
Bet you found out it took a lot of sap.
Oh, it does. It's amazing.
Live and learn. It does.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions for the applicants?
I went out to take a look at it. I don't see a problem here at all, and I'm going to move it, be approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have it.
Thank you very much.
We have the MyLars ready.
Thank you.
They're behind.
We're going to take a moment to sign the MyLars, so you'll be able to take them.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Next, it's just after 6:05, so we're going to continue the public hearing on the subdivision entitled Roberts Way. Anybody here to speak on that? Please step forward. Welcome.
We meet Paul Grazewitz.
If you could write your name on that form there as well, please.
Just for the benefit of the board, I'm David Loring from Ty &amp; Bond. I was asked to attend in place of Gene, who was unable to make it tonight, so comments on the review letter or, you know, correspondence as the meeting goes along.
You would note your name on that sheet, please. Thank you for attending. Is there a better location? Our esteemed cameraman's going to help find a better location so that people at home may have a chance to see what you might point out. Thank you.
We brought three full-size copies.
Oh, thank you.
For your request.
I'll spread them out for everyone to be able to look at.
Can the record show that the engineer and I are known to each other? Some 30 years ago, I worked on some projects with him. I haven't for the last 15 years, and I wanted it a matter of record that we know each other.
Thank you for that clarification. You have the floor.
Okay. We're proposing a short 400-foot road and the creation of three lots. Couple of years ago, maybe not quite two years ago, we applied for a special permit to change the zoning. The zoning line was basically 400 feet off of the highway, and because of the nature of this area with substantial amount of wetlands, we got the property line extended by special permit to the back of these three lot lines. Then we designed the subdivision. We've got, as I said, a 400-foot road, 50-foot right-of-way, coming in off the highway at a slight downgrade of about 1.5 percent, crossing the wetland, and then with a vertical curve, continuing up at about 3.5 percent up to the cul-de-sac bulb. We chose the location for the roadway to minimize the wetlands impact. We're proposing walls on each side of the roadway with an open arch culvert to allow for the reptiles, if there be any, to move back and forth. This area is a mapped endangered species habitat area. We've been through the NHESP, and we've gotten their approval. So we're proposing these three lots. As I said, they'll be commercial slash industrial. They're all greater than minimum acreage required, and we basically sized the property to accommodate building before we get to the steep slopes. At the back of the property, the land starts getting too steep, so we really didn't see any need or any purpose to, you know, purchase any of that land. The land behind us actually wraps around us to the south and continues all the way down to Teal Road. It's a large parcel. The property up the hill behind us, it's wooded, and it goes up to what would have been the old, I call it the Converse subdivision. There was a large subdivision, started back there in the '70s, and the upper part of it never got completed, which would have been the lots closest to our property. We did show conceptual building locations. We did soil testing for septics, and we've been through the process with Ty &amp; Bond. They wrote a letter back in January. It was a number of pages. We went through, took care of all the comments, revised the plans, sent them back. We got another letter back, I believe it was in February, and we had addressed essentially all of the comments. There were a few items, six or seven items, for the planning board to consider, and there was a couple of comments that we addressed on my letter back March 1st, one of them being requesting a waiver on the landscaping requirements. And I said, because of the open LID drainage that was proposed, tree planting was not practicable along the proposed roadway. We have swales, so we have our pavement, we have swales, and those swales take the water and bring it into the different stormwater treatment facilities on either side of the roadway. And as I said, we're keeping things very narrow down by the existing highway because of the wetlands. We wanted to minimize that square footage we're impacting down there. The building developments will be at the end of the road, resulting in minimal visibility from the town road. Landscaping can be provided on the individual lots as part of the site plan review for each of the three lots. So because these are non-residential, each of these lots will have to come back to the board for individual site plan approval. At present, you know, we'll be coming in with one lot. Jamie Van Dyke would like to set his business up, and I've chosen the Northerly lot. Hopefully, he agrees with that. And then the other two lots, I guess we'll just see what, you know, what happens. We did size the stormwater facilities to, you know, treat and detain the stormwater from all three of these post-development of the lots. We have made some, you know, assumptions on the amount of impervious, you know, the size of the buildings, and so on. So, you know, at that point, on the individual site plans, we're either going to have to, you know, meet the sizing that meets the stormwater, or we're going to have to add additional stormwater management to, you know, make up the difference. We will have wells and septics on each lot, and we'll have underground power. We're still looking for a source for the underground power. There's poles coming down the highway, no wires on them, but I think we've got a handle on where we can get an easement from to get power over there.
The board has any questions? Or what my suggestion is going to be is we'll go through the November 6 Ty &amp; Bond letter, paragraph by paragraph, look at their comments, including Graz's reply on March 1st.
Well, I've got a couple of comments. First of all, it is a wet area, and I really feel that before we do too much, it should be a determination by the Conservation Commission. And apparently, there's some disagreement there, and I think we need to get that ironed out. There are comments. I went down to take a look at it, and I really think you're trying to do too much with too little. You look at your GS map, and it shows that quite a bit of the lot is wet big time. The lot's exacerbated by the fact that, as you alluded to, there are a couple of projects up in the rear, and certainly, the drainage and the runoff is running down there. I've got to be concerned as where your drainage is going to go, because I just don't particularly see, I haven't looked at your elevations and so on and so forth. Good set of plans, but I expect that from you. But I've got some concerns out there. The other concern I have is this. That area is going to be repaved this year. And repavers, that's exactly what they do. They're going to add three or four inches, and they're going to crown the road. And that means that your drainage system probably is going to have to be redone. You know how pavers are, and they're just going to come along and pave the road. They don't really care about drainage or plans or anything like that and so forth. So these are my concerns. I'd like to see it go, but it's kind of a wet area. I think the board needs to get down and take a look. I think Conservation needs to take a look and make determination, but I think we should give Paul and the visiting engineer the opportunity tonight to state their case. These are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Gould said. I, too, would like to see a formal site visit of the board to walk that property, to kind of get a better understanding, so that we're all on the same page. I share the same conservation concerns, because, I mean, you know, it's right on the border of a swamp. The water level of that swamp is very unpredictable, and the grade of the water coming down, I want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for a bigger problem down the road. So I would like to see us make a site visit as a board.
Could I say something? I think, no, a site visit's a great idea. As far as the wetlands go, we filed with the Conservation a long time ago, many months ago. They did have a consultant go out and, along with our consultant, and review all the wetland flagging, and, you know, some moved this way, some moved that way. We resurveyed them, located the adjusted flaggings, and this plan reflects the final wetlands line as agreed upon by the Conservation's consultant. Conservation has been, rather than, you know, because you've got stormwater management, which has a lot of engineering requirements, and rather than Conservation hire a separate consultant, they said, well, Ty &amp; Bond is reviewing all the stormwater management. If they review it and they're happy with it, we're not going to do it all over again. We're good with it, too. So that's where we're at with Conservation. They've actually been holding off, waiting for the planning board. And I told, I asked David to go ahead and do whatever he's got to do now, because, you know, the planning board has it, Ty &amp; Bond's reviewed it, we've addressed all the stormwater management, and made our system accommodate the requirements. So, you know, it's kind of time for them to act now. They'll be meeting at the end of the month, and I'm hoping then that, you know, I'm hoping that we're, you know, to a point where they can give us an order of conditions and close the thing. But we want the board, I don't want the board saying, we want to see this change and that change after they've closed, you know, the, so it's kind of, we kind of have to get a decision from you guys first.
Right.
Before we tell them to close it, basically. But no, I agree, a site walk's always a good idea.
And just to let you know, I did talk to the Conservation agent, actually, Tracy did, and it is just like what Mr. Grazewitz has said, that they're kind of holding off to see what the planning board will agree on at this point.
And should we agree and come up with an approval, we'll be conditioning it on Conservation, certainly. Yes?
I want a clarification. We've reviewed for planning board, we did not review for Conservation Commission. So in terms of reviewing stormwater calculations, it's reviewed in terms of what the current state practice is, we have not reviewed, you know, field conditions for water resource areas nor site conditions out there. So I just want to make that clear to the board. And we did make a couple of comments in the letter with regards to the water table. And I don't know when that delineation was done. You mentioned it was several years ago.
No, no. It was done, it was done this year.
Okay.
And Ty &amp; Bond, your wetland specialist or scientist, whatever, went out to the site with our environmental scientist, and they went through the delineation and...
The delineation probably is fine. I'm just saying, in terms of this application with regards to the Wetland Protection Act, the stormwater management aspect was...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So if we all agree, then, we'll go through Ty &amp; Bond's letter. And actually, before doing that, can we look at a date for a site visit? Because certainly we don't want to miss it. We've had two members bring this up.
Yeah, sure. Let's see what I can pull up here. All right, so I imagine it'll be during the day. What are folks' availability at this point? For, I imagine for daylight. If it's in the late afternoon, I mean, at least it's getting lighter.
Anytime's fine with me. I can move my schedule around.
Okay.
So any day, anytime.
Is next week okay? Sometime next week?
Next Tuesday afternoon?
Yeah. I'm open for that.
The 14th?
The 14th.
That's agreeable.
Okay. What time?
Okay. That will work for you as well?
Yep.
What time works? 3:00 in the afternoon?
3:00, 4 o'clock? What?
3:00 is great for me.
Is good for you? Okay. 3:00?
3:00.
Is that okay? All right.
3:00 PM on Tuesday, March 14th. Good.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind, for the people at home that are watching, just quickly go over what a site visit is and how it's not an open meeting? There's no deliberations. You can, you word it much better than I do.
Well, actually, the real chairman probably would word it much better than I will either, but your comments are very correct. During the site visit, it is not open to the public, and since it is not open to the public, the board will not be capable of deliberating at that time. So a majority of the board will be present, but there will be no deliberation occurring. No decisions will be made. We will simply be looking at, in fact-finding, while we are there.
Thank you.
Probably should get a nice blurb to be able to read each time we have one of these.
Okay.
All right. We want to look at the Ty &amp; Bond February 6 letter. They number each comment, and then there's subsections. So let's go down to number one. Subsection A, the location of wells and/or water services are not shown on the plans. Well, that was on the February 6th. Conceptual well locations are shown on Sheet 3, and the bold comment addressed, I'm asking Ty &amp; Bond, that means you have now been satisfied with the term "comment addressed"?
Yes, this February 6th letter, just for clarification, is in response to the letter we received after the first from Graz Engineering responding to our initial review of January 16th. So the comment is...
Hold on. Mr. Chairman, can we have Ty &amp; Bond come up and sit with the applicant, so we can get you on the mic? Thank you.
Again, David Loring from Ty &amp; Bond. Just clarifying for the board, as you review the February 6 letter, that was a follow-up letter to the February 1 letter from Graz Engineering, which was a response to our initial review of the project dated January 16th. So as you read through the comments as they're presented, it presents the initial comment, then the response in italic, and then the bold was the resolution or the current status of that comment.
Okay. Thank you. So we can, I guess, go straight to the bold for...
Yes.
Saving of time. 1A, Ty &amp; Bond is now letting us know it has been addressed.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. 1B, it has also been addressed. We're really going to be looking at for the items that have not yet been addressed. And 1C is the first one, very much like that, dealing with landscaping. Paul already mentioned there were issues with landscaping and the LID design. The bold now reads, "The board should determine if, A, if the requested right-of-way width is appropriate," see waiver requests, "and B, if roadway landscaping should be provided. The applicant should request a waiver for the installation of street trees." We have on the March 1 letter a waiver request. The request is, "We request a waiver from the roadway landscaping requirements. Because open LID drainage was proposed, tree planting is not practicable along the proposed roadway. Building development will be at the end of the road, resulting in minimal visibility from the town road. Landscaping can be provided on the individual lots as part of the site plan review for each of these three lots." Anybody on the board not agree with the waiver request?
That's on item 1.
1C. It is a very good point that the three lots, when developed, are going to have to come before us each, and if we determine based on the location and the build-out that we want landscaping, we can make a requirement at that time. All right? Not hearing anything? We'll move on. 1D, comment's been addressed. 1E, comment's been addressed. 2A, this is dealing with the... Two A, this is dealing with the fire department. And a sixty-foot paved radius will allow adequate truck maneuverability, talking about fire truck maneuverability specifically. "The board should consider revising the roadway design standards in the subdivision regulations to confirm the intent of the required cul-de-sac dimension."
For clarity.
Thank you.
It's not only dealing with fire trucks. This is, could be dealing with delivery trucks, any type of trailer truck. This is a commercial development. We don't know what the intended long-term use of the individual lots would be. But that aside, I think there's a typo in your subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Which is what we're trying to get to here. It calls for a hundred-and-fifty-foot right-of-way radius, which is rather excessive. So, I think it's actually a typo in the regulations. But the way they're written, you would need a waiver for that. So...
Okay.
That's the reason that she's going on.
Okay. It's good to know. All right. So, they're saying sixty is adequate and our particular regulation happens to be excessive.
For further clarification, WB sixty-five, which is a pretty, that's your normal-length trailer truck. A WB sixty-two is slightly larger, but the turning radius of those vehicles is forty-five feet. So, this would accommodate, you know, that typical trailer truck movement. And a fire truck falls generally within that slightly tighter radius. So, an emergency vehicle should be accommodated well within what's being proposed.
Thank you. Chintoff, if you could make a note on that potential error, that when we're doing the revision, we fix it.
I will.
Feel free to contact, we can clarify just what we were talking about as well.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you.
With that understanding, board ready to move on on this issue? Okay. Two B has been addressed. Two C has been addressed. Two D is addressed. Two E, and this is the next one that we have a response from Graz on. Ty and Bond comment being, "The inclusion of the dry hydrant in the design will allow the fire department to draw fire protection water from the site. However, the quantity of available water at any given time has not been provided and may not meet the needs for future developments. The Winchunden Fire Department and/or building inspector should be consulted on the requirements for fire protection."
Where's the dry hydrant?
It's on page three.
We have a wet pond.
Okay, but from where are you going to obtain the water? You're going to dig a pond?
Yes. Part of our stormwater system on that side of the roadway, we have sediment four bay, dry detention, and then a wet pond before the wetlands. And it's from that wet pond that we have a dry hydrant.
That's why conservation ought to go out there. And that's why there should be a determination. We can't make any kind of a determination on something like this. You can't, just can't do it.
So, in addition, when we get to discussing approval, in addition to conservation being conditioned, we'll want fire department approval as well, I would think.
Pond, how far back?
Far back from... Located right here in the dry hydrant. About details on a detail sheet, the dry hydrant would be right there at the edge of the road. So, you're probably in the road about a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty feet.
And you're gonna, you're gonna have three buildings out there, and you're telling me that eight thousand gallons of water, which will disappear on one of our pumps in about ten minutes?
I'm not saying it's a great quantity. I'm saying, I'm not saying it's a great quantity. We do have some. If I can get some feedback from the chief, I can, there is room to enlarge it.
There's water there. I agree.
Yeah. Plenty of it. We've done testing out there, and the wetlands are always wet. We're right next to it. And as we come up the slope, even, even, you know, a good ways up, groundwater is probably twenty-four, twenty-eight inches, so...
Yeah, no question.
We've got all of our stormwater going, at least on that side, to that point. So, it's always going to be fed, you know, even, even when groundwater drops, rainwater is going to be going in that direction too, so...
Thank you.
Since we have a site visit planned a week from now, we certainly aren't getting to approval this evening, which gives us time to reach out to the fire department, please?
Yeah, I've already reached out to him, and I'll follow up with him with the conversation that's from tonight as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ready to move on? Okay. Three A is addressed, or three A I. Three A two is addressed. Three A three, addressed, although there's a note for the board, "The board may wish to consider how future roadway and stormwater management system maintenance may be addressed under future change of ownership."
This particular subdivision, you've got a lot of stormwater management facilities and controls that are going to be located on essentially private properties. How collectively are they going to be maintained in the future when the current landowner sells off? Currently, it'd be under the current landowner responsibility, but in the future, how are these going to be maintained and managed with three individual landowners? And it's a question of what's going to happen long-term when you look at this type of a private development? So that, should there be a failure? Should there be a concern? Is the town going to come in and fix it? And how, just how is that going to be managed?
Do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, the, I mean, this particular, normally what's done is, if this is going to become a public road, then the easements would give the public or the town access towards the maintenance. And it generally falls on the town to maintain it. In this particular project, we are not asking, and as part of our submittal, it's not proposed to be public. So, the owner of the property, Jameson Van Dyke, will own the road and will be responsible. He'll be responsible forever because even if a lot were sold, the road would still be in his ownership. So, whoever owns the road owns the stormwater systems.
Would you agree with that statement?
Quite, I do. It depends on how it's written, but he's got to retain an easement over those. It gets messy ten, fifteen years down the road when you're dealing now with three different landowners and a third, fourth owner of the roadway. And I just caution the board with private roadways. That's where a lot of these comments are directed, that it's not public, it's privately managed, and at that point in time, the owner will have no financial interest in this lot other than an expense of maintaining a road and stormwater management and utilities.
Is there a way to attach the private way to one of the lots?
There are a number of different mechanisms and that they could approach it. One could be an ownership association.
Okay.
That all three share an interest in the maintenance and ownership of the road. As the landowner can, he can retain its ownership in perpetuity. It will pass down to his heirs. It could be owned by an individual. If there's one that has a stronger interest in the overall development, they could then own it. But something should be in place to ensure that everything is maintained and properly managed in the future.
Okay.
So that it doesn't come back to the town with three landowners paying taxes, saying, "We're not getting any services from the town for this, but we've got a problem."
Okay.
So, we will want to be coming back to that after the site visit.
Right.
Three B is addressed. Three C. The comment is, "This comment has been addressed through notation on the site plans. It should be noted that the development of each lot will likely require site plan review, which will allow the board to determine if the development is substantially different than the concepts approved on the definitive site subdivision process." Any question there?
No.
Something for us to remember when we come back?
Something to remember, exactly. If we're going through any site plan review, if we're having an engineer looking at this, that they coincide with what ends up being approved for the subdivision.
Okay. Going through number four, A. Starts off again with comment addressed, but then comment continues, "The revised infiltration trench design provides the required two-foot separation to groundwater. Since test pits were not performed within the actual footprint of the infiltration systems, the board may wish to consider a condition which requires the applicant to provide actual groundwater elevations as observed prior to full construction activities in order to document that the required two-foot of separation can be provided." Will we be, will you be able to do that?
Oh, yes, definitely. I mean, we did, our testing that we did was in the location of the proposed septic here. We did four deep holes, two perk tests, and we do have infiltration facilities nearby, but the testing wasn't done right in it. So, I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely a good idea to do that, right at the location. At the time we did the perk testing, we didn't, you know, we were still working with the stormwater design. We knew what the groundwater table was in that area, in each of these areas, but we didn't know where the facilities were going to be at that time.
So, that would be an expected condition that you'd see?
Yeah, we're not questioning it. We're just suggesting it. And obviously, it's a conceptual layout as building lot development occurs, then I'm sure many of these things would change slightly.
There were perk tests done? Perk tests were done?
Yeah, we did four deep holes and two tests, and two perks on each lot.
When?
You don't happen to have the, no, it's in that study, the... Impact development thing. Maybe it's in here. Sometimes I don't always print everything out. Is that the impact development? Yeah, that's it right there. They were witnessed by the board, of course. Now, let's see, we did, did them October... This, this past October.
Two sixteen?
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
And the perk tests were done after...
They had to go out there for two days, so it was not, it was two days.
Perk tests were done after a six-month drought?
They were done what?
After a six-month drought.
Perk testing can be done any time of the year.
I know.
Yeah, and the groundwater levels...
Wise, a wise man would wait until fall, especially on the year like two thousand and sixteen, when, you know, we've probably had about two inches of rain.
Absolutely.
Let me tell you really what my concern is. I want to know how you're going to drain this.
Stormwater-wise, it's, it's, the stormwater analysis, it's detailed for the entire site. All of the water has a designed location to go. We have the water coming off the hill, we're picking up in the back.
Yeah.
And it's, it's being, so we don't have to deal with that water. It's, it's water coming through the woods. We don't want it running through our industrial sites. So, that is being brought around to not go through it.
But the water's going on somebody else's property.
The water is all going to the swamp down here, or the bog. That's where it went before, it's where it went now. I mean, we did, we did, we did the two, the ten, and the hundred-year storm analysis. We have shown that there was a decrease in every one of those storms, pre and post-development. I mean, that's part of the stormwater management standards. We have to do that.
The swamp drains across one forty. There's a pipe farther down the road where the swamp drains across one forty.
Right.
And, you know, my concern is, is the exacerbation, basically, with head top and everything else. You know, there's people that we need to consider, that pipe goes right across, it's an open trench, it's not a pipe.
And that's why we have to, that's why we have to do this. We have to generate a hydrological report for every storm. And these guys review it. I mean, and I can tell you that in, that in each one of these storms, in the two-year storm, we reduced it from three-point-one-three CFS down to three-point-on-one. In the ten-year, it went from eleven-point-eighty-one down to ten-point-one-two. In the hundred-year, it went from thirty-nine-point-eighty-five down to thirty-eight-point-twenty-three. So, we have to make sure that we're not impacting off-site. We have to take it, we got to detain it, we got to attenuate it, and we got to treat it. We got to, we got to do all of this treatment to make it better because of the pavement, too. So, the design, the analysis, stormwater hydrology report takes into account all of the imperviousness and the buildings, the roadway and all of that. We got to put a certain amount of water back into the ground. We got to treat it, and we also have to detain it and attenuate it. And that's all part of this. The biggest part of any subdivision these days is the stormwater management. Most of this plan is all related to stormwater management because that's, that's how they've got it set up.
Do I see a four-foot pipe down there for water on the plan?
I have an arch, an open arch. I, I don't need it. I don't need it for hydrological, or I don't need it to get the water through.
Okay.
I only did that to provide light under the guidelines for critters to...
For wildlife.
For wildlife. It's just divided because, because there is endangered species, and the turtles can, you know, go back and forth if they want.
Four-foot pipe, and you don't need it?
I don't, no, I don't need it. It was strictly for environmental purposes, not stormwater. That was actually a comment that Ty and Bond had, and it...
I hear the concern of our member. I hear the response. But up here, you know, being appointed officials, we're not engineers. So, now I'll look to our engineering firm to ask, is the, you know, description of what will happen post-construction by the applicant accurate? That the situation of water will not be detrimental to the neighbors?
We've been through the impact report and the hydrology calculations that were provided. We did look at the test pit data, groundwater and the onsite data that was done last fall. The estimated seasonal high groundwater out there, per the documentation we provided, is just a little over twenty-four inches. It ranged, I think, twenty-four to twenty-eight, twenty-nine inches down was where the estimated seasonal high groundwater table was in the test pits that were done. You know, the wetland area, obviously, that's been field delineated, there's groundwater right at the surface there. So, within the buildable lot areas, that's the recommendation what we did here to make sure that there is a test pit done to verify the water table is down and you do have the two-foot separation for the stormwater management facilities that are being proposed to function appropriately. I'm not trying to sidestep it, but I don't want to come out and say, "I don't see any problems." It is obviously a wet site. There's high groundwater out there. At the lower part of the site where the crossing is being provided, it's a wetland area. It receives a good deal of water from the side of the mountain as it drains into there. I'm not so much concerned with the size of the culvert. It's not a channel that's got flowing water. It's a wetland area. Per the mass regulations, when you're dealing with that, you need to provide for wildlife continuity. You can't interrupt the resource area. Thus, you've got an oversized culvert there to provide that habitat movement back and forth through the area. It was probably required by natural heritage. Didn't get into the details of that.
I suggested it, I didn't wait for them to. I just offered it, so...
I want you to know I looked at the plan.
It's not there for hydraulic or water conveyance purposes. It's there for habitat continuity.
Well, I'm not questioning Mr. Grazewitz. He's a good engineer and so on and so forth. But, you know, once the plan is done, once the project is done, I'm not going to be here, but, you know, in come the knaves and say, "You guys got a plan here that floods my land," or "You people have got water coming through my cellar," or something such as this, and, you know... this, and, you know, it happens.
I can tell you my engineer, it was Jean Christie, who couldn't be here tonight because of personal reasons, went through it pretty thoroughly. Does a lot of stormwater work, and we did have concerns, she raised them in the letter, but the reporting and the data that we've looked at is consistent, and we can say that stormwater is being managed on-site if it's properly constructed as per the current drawings. There's still going to be significant changes out there, I expect, when individual lot development occurs, because we don't know the configuration of the buildings, the driveways, and those may impact septic system layouts, well locations. There's a lot more that's going to occur, and someone's going to have to keep an eye on this through the site plan approval process to make sure that things don't change that could impact what's been proposed.
I would remember, you said we're going to keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. That brings us to 4B. Comment addressed, "Stormwater management design addresses the TSS removal requirements of Standard 4 of the Mass DEP stormwater standards." That did not mean a lot to me other than comment addressed, but if you could please explain the rest of that comment.
TSS removal is a total suspended solids for the stormwater discharging, and with the additional stormwater facilities out there, we're just saying that the treatments that are being provided address that requirement. There's 10 standards that need to be addressed through stormwater management under the current Massachusetts regulations, and that is just one of them that, you know, you need to address and make sure that it's properly treated.
So, this plan is addressing it?
Yes.
Thank you. C, comment addressed, D, comment addressed, E1, comment addressed, E2, E3. We get to E4, comment addressed, but we do have an additional comment. "The culvert has been sized to accommodate a storm event greater than the 100-year storm and does it not restrict flow between the two wetland sections." This is the famous four-foot culvert.
This goes to the point that we were just discussing a moment ago regarding the capacity of the structure and wildlife habitat continuity.
Thank you. E5, comment addressed. E6, comment addressed. We get to 4F. Comment addressed, but we have an additional comment. "While the applicant has not submitted a mounding analysis, the rationale documenting why it is not needed is acceptable."
When you're designing in areas of high groundwater and you're putting in septic systems, there is sometimes a concern that you could be putting additional waters into that area resulting in an elevated groundwater table in a general locus. We, the initial comment was, "To that point, there was additional information that was provided that Jean looked at and accepted, saying, 'We understand why you're not doing a mounding analysis, and what you've provided is acceptable to address that concern.'"
Thank you. I do appreciate you being here. G, 4G, comment addressed, but note is to see the response to original comment 3C. Original comment being on this letter or prior?
It looks like it's commenting on the individual site plans per lot.
Yes.
Okay. Which means when we get to individual site plans, we're going to want to repull this report out.
Yes.
All right, 4G is then completed. 5A. This is the radius issue again, right-of-way width. Says, "Comment has been addressed, however, the board should consider previous experience with private utility companies and house services where located in previous subdivisions."
I think where Jean was alluding to is we're providing private utilities within a right-of-way. You're reducing the right-of-way for an industrial, commercial subdivision from 80 to 50 feet, just ensuring if there's been past experience with the board that utilities are comfortably fit within that right-of-way, and that, you know, there's been no issues or concerns from landowners, developers, or from the town as far as the installation of those utilities.
Does anybody on the board have any memory of this?
Are you going to match the drumbeat of the telephone company and national grid on this one? It's their way or no way. I mean, they, you know, they have very specific ideas and plans for things like this, and so, especially underground, you know, because they got to be able to get at it if there's a problem.
They may require additional easements that fall outside the proposed right-of-way or right-of-way as established for the location of those utilities if they so desire with their design.
I'm not sure that there's any facilities down there for telephone and electric.
Not yet.
Where do we get into that?
We have to get through this first, though.
Yeah, you mentioned you have all those poles without a lector, but there is that one phone wire on them, isn't there?
There is, yeah.
Okay. There isn't a comment on B? It is, the, original, though, "The applicant has requested that the requirement for bike lanes be waived." Where is that request for that waiver?
We had asked the original submittal, we had a waivers letter where we dated November 17th, and they consisted of the right-of-way, 50 feet versus 80, deletion of the bike lanes, the two-foot wide shoulders versus eight feet, and granite curbing, as we proposed, no curbing for open drainage, and deletion of sidewalks, those. And then, on top of that, we asked for the tree planting.
Okay. I don't have that one in front of me, so we have two different requests for waivers to consider.
There could be bike lanes down there, isn't it?
I think that it's part of our regulations, and that's why they're asking the waiver, so.
I don't think bike.
There's a big hunk of right-of-ways across the street, but not on that side of the road.
Okay.
And I think the bike lane goes behind the carriage house and so forth. I don't think you're going to get the bike.
Right, but this would be dealing with actual bike lanes on the new road.
Right.
Waiving for that, and.
Yes.
You know, considering it's mostly going to be, you know, truck traffic, it's commercial traffic, not residential, it's probably not the best spot to have bike lanes put in. But we'll consider all the waivers later.
We're simply raising the issues, obviously, as you review subdivisions throughout the town, your consistency and justification for granting waivers comes into play, and I think you've now passed your complete streets policy as well, which also would weigh in on decisions of the board.
5C. "The board should consider if the waiver request is consistent with previous developments in town. The reduction in shoulder width request paired with the waiver request for the elimination of the bike lane and sidewalks leaves very little room for pedestrian and bicycle passage in addition to snow management." So, when, again, we deal with all of the requests for waivers, we'll review that.
Right.
5D and E are both noted as acknowledged, and those are in your waiver requests?
Yes, those are the granite curbing we spoke about and the sidewalk.
Okay. So, it's a board. We do have the site visit planned for a week from now. After doing the site visit, we would then reconvene at our next meeting, is what I would think is best action. Take up what we learned, finally deliberate on anything we saw, and then we can go through the request for waivers and make our decisions.
What I can do for the board is I can draft up draft conditions and list the waivers in that draft condition document, so you have something to look at, and I can tweak it and change it going through that, so.
And if, and you're reaching out to both our fire department and conservation, if we could get a response from them.
Okay.
Before we reopen the hearing, continue the hearing.
Right.
You know, because we've had too many concerns.
Any curb cut requests yet?
No.
No.
Is there a curb?
There's no curb. The, I mean, the site distance here.
Yeah, but the state has got to issue a curb cut out there.
Actually, I don't think the state controls this section. I think the town does.
I bet the state is going to have something to say about it.
Not on this section.
It is a, this is a locally controlled section of a state-numbered route.
I think the state plows it.
They may. I did, I, I did check to see who had jurisdiction over this.
I'm pretty sure the state plows it, you know, and, you know, you've got 80-some-odd feet, you ought to have enough there and so forth.
I'll look into that.
In one of my reviews, I did check to see who had jurisdiction, because that was going to be one of my comments to Jean's, so.
It's sort of, it's a local road, but I believe that it's going to be repaved under Chapter 90 and so forth, so there's probably a flip of the coin, you know.
The folks in Boston consider it to be a local road. How the district considers it may be different.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just have a few scheduling questions. I'm trying to wrap my head around how our decision impacts the Conservation Commission. Do you have a date to go back in front of the Conservation?
They only meet once a month, the last Thursday of the month, so.
And will we have enough? I guess I'm trying to fully understand what the Conservation Commission is, are they looking for a vote, an approval from us before they make a decision on that, and then if they have any changes, it comes back to us?
I, I think that I need to talk to David Coons a little bit more before I could give you a better answer for that question.
That does impact when we schedule to take this up again.
Right.
Because if their last, if their only meeting a month is the last Thursday. Our next meeting would be prior to that Thursday.
I was thinking.
So, if they want action by us before their meeting, it would be nice that we try to continue this for the meeting prior to their meeting. If, on the other hand, they would like to meet and act before we act, so.
It, it may be prudent to continue into next month. That way, there is adequate time to reach out to the CONCOM and also to the fire chief to get some resolution on those two questions.
Okay. So, the idea might be then that we continue this to 6:35, since we're going to stop meeting at 6:30.
Right.
6:35 at our first meeting in the month of April.
That sounds right.
What is that date? We do have to have a definite date to continue.
I think it's the sixth, or, no, wait, I'm sorry, the fourth. It's the first Tuesday of April.
Would that work for you, Paul?
I guess whatever works for everybody.
If I may, as a point of clarification, kind of to your, it's not unusual when there's different departments reviewing plans that eventually one is going to have to make a decision, and that decision is often contingent upon any changes being brought back before the board that may be the result of the other's permit.
Right.
Point is well taken. You know, the point is well taken, because there's a, there's a lot of moisture down there that is definitely under the jurisdiction of not us, but, you know, Conservation.
Right.
And, you know, I don't have a problem inviting them down to the, to the site visit, not at all, and so forth, but, you know, I think they're going to have to take a good look at this. I just, I just do, and so forth, so. Lot of water, a lot of drainage, and so forth, and I think they need to look.
Please consider that when you write the draft conditions.
I will.
And will you let the fire department and Conservation know about our site visit scheduled?
I can, yes.
Thank you. Motion to continue this to April the 4th at 6:35 PM?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks so much.
Ty and Vaughn did a good job.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for both coming.
Five, you got to go home.
Yeah, I'll be a little earlier tonight. 9:30 last night.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't hear it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Meeting updates. I have the master plan meeting, the next meeting scheduled for March 2nd. So, again, we are announcing something that's already occurred. You know, the committee continues to work on draft chapters to put out for public review and comment. MRPC, we'll wait until Guy Covasero returns for further updates from MRPC. Tomorrow is the next meeting of MJTC at 6:30. That's a new meeting time for that committee. The Committee and Economic Development Steering Committee, a community and economic development steering committee. Committee is working with planning and development staff on the FY17 Community Development Block Grant. Also for correspondence, the Select Board has some applications there considering Alternatives Unlimited, a voluntary toll booth, boot drive for Mental Health Awareness Month on Saturday, May 6th, during the time of 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Smith Country Cheese is going to be requesting an event permit for hours during their current retail hours. The Klock YMCA, their road race event permit, Spring Fling, five miles, race date April 29th, race time at 10:00 AM. Klock YMCA has also requested through the Select Board an event permit for the road race for everyone's favorite, June 17th at 8:00 AM. That would be the Summer Solstice event, which they are requesting a permit for the actual Summer Solstice event and parade as well. In Ashburnham, the ZBA has a notice of a decision, special permit. The board unanimously voted for this special permit back on January 25th. We have minutes of the February 21st meeting, our last meeting. Everybody that's in attendance this evening was in attendance then. Anybody have any comments, corrections? Motion to approve the minutes?
Sumut.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I thought we weren't going to get a second for a moment. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.